Good morning, everybody. It is Wednesday, August 26th. It's nine o'clock in the morning. We're here in the Senator Hearing Room for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. We start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Seems like we're nicely separated. A first opportunity every week is public comment. Nobody has signed up to do that, so we'll go into a presentation from Health and Human Services, Alyssa Zastopol, on a current COVID situation. And she said she had good news.
Oh. Good morning, everyone. My name's Alyssa Zastopol. I am the Commander for County Health and Human Services, and today I'm going to talk about our COVID-19 data. So as of August 26th morning at 8:00 a.m., we had 3,587 cases. This number includes confirmed positive and presumptive. 3,433 have tested positive, and 37,815 have tested negative. The weekly percent positivity rate prior week, August 22nd, was 7.9%. That's pretty much holding that positivity rate right now. We had 262 cases over that previous week, and so it appears that what is happening is pretty much holding steady with cases, but we are seeing slight increase. But the good news is we were removed from the OHA watch list, I think since the last time board session met, so that's really a good thing. So that's my update on COVID. Does anybody have any?
I do have, and I just was looking. Ryan sent us the stats for day 33, positive tests, and you were kind of getting at it, but we saw, well, we saw one at 75 a couple of weeks ago, but there were a couple of 50s. Now, now it acts like it's going back down and more like, like it isn't a good number, but 30's certainly lower seems to be the average. Is that what you're seeing too?
Yeah, yeah, and I did speak with our team about it, and they seem to think that we're going to continue with like our sporadic cases, that we should be below 30% still for last week, so that...
And then watching news this morning, they showed a statewide, and I'm no statistician, but I can tell the curve seemed to be going down.
Yes. Statewide, it is slightly decreasing. It is.
So what's the next thing to be afraid of, any events? Schools aren't really, nothing changes in the near future, so that should continue to go down? They thought mask wearing might be, and I hope that's true if we're going to have to mess with this.
Yeah, I think it's going to continue as is. We're going to continue to see slight increases as we see more places reopen.
Okay. Kevin?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, I don't know if this is a place to bring it up. Yesterday, we were looking at some stats, some graphs, and I see Ryan sitting here today. I don't know if this is a place to talk about some of the things we've isolated, the density of families, the density of where we're seeing these cases. I just want to put on the record that all our community partners, people of color partners that we've been working with every week, and they're doing a great job trying to move forward with these testing events. And we're sending this letter over to OHA and to the Governor to say, hey, we would love to get some support so we could do these, more and more of these mass testing events where people feel comfortable to come, not only for the test, but to get communication on how to deal with this, and so that they feel better and that they feel, you know, they can trust that this is not something that's going to be an "I got you." So if you want to share anything about that, that would be great.
Yeah, yeah, we're definitely really pushing to increase testing. We do have that testing event on the 31st of August up in Woodburn. It is at Woodburn Ambulance. It actually already filled up, so now we're moving on to September 1st, and then in Salem, we're going to start doing weekly testing on the 9th. So we're really trying to push for more testing, and we're still trying to contract with as many partners as we can to increase testing. And I'm even considering putting in a request to OHA to request more tests, just so that we have more to distribute to our partners.
Yeah, let's consider it today. I just think we need to continue to... Are those tests in Salem going to be at the fairgrounds? Is that what the plan is, or do we know?
I don't know.
Okay.
But I can...
When do we get it?
Yeah, I can follow up with you.
Well, I just want to say thank you for, I know Katrina's on a nice, well-deserved break, and thank you for your work, and Ryan and your whole team, and the tireless work that's going into this, to try to protect people and isolate situations. Love the information we've been getting, the detail of the information that really helps us isolate that. And I know our partners are appreciative of that, too. These grants that are going out, these community grants, that I think what, Ryan, I think they just close on the 9th or something like that. We were talking about up to September 5th, yeah. These grants, Commissioner, I don't know if you're aware of it, but these grants are anywhere from $50,000 to $200,000 that our community partners can apply for to help with contact tracing, potential testing, all kinds of things. So that's out there right now. So I think as we move down the road here, a month from now, in the end of September, we're going to have some, even a better handle on how to try to prevent the spread and reduce those things. So thank you so much for the hard work and the detail of the work that you're doing.
Thank you, thank you. I also did want to give you guys an update on the schools, because that has been on everybody's minds as school is about to open. We received 119 blueprints as of today, and 93 of those blueprints have been reviewed, so that's about 80%. They were supposed to all be turned in by the 17th of August, so that was just last week. Those who have submitted their blueprints will receive their letters of attestation probably by the end of this week. And most are opting for the online comprehensive distance learning, because as of now, or as when they submitted their blueprint, some of them did them a few weeks ago, we're not meeting the school metrics that were set forth by OHA. So I just wanted to let you guys know that's where we were with schools, and that we are still working on contracts, you know, with our partners, I said, to increase testing, but also to increase vaccine distribution. That's important to us for the winter season as we come up with flu. And we'll try and partner with groups so that we can distribute flu vaccine or COVID-19 vaccine if it becomes available.
Great.
Go ahead.
I think one other thing worth noting is the, in our office here, Chad led a, I think it was Chad led a stuffing party, I want to call it, to put kits together for masks and handed them to the sheriff. I don't know how many, Jen, a thousand? So our sheriff, when they're out, they can educate and hand out masks. For those that are watching, I think we need to continue to talk about these, the cases that we're finding. It's not coming out of the salon or the restaurant. Majority of these are coming from social gatherings, family living situations. I use the example, and I've been, you know, even though I live up in Detroit Lake and I'm on the lake quite a bit, I kind of stayed to my own little boat, but people that are out there with 12 boats tied together, that's the type of thing that we're, we have to educate people to be very, very careful as they're doing that. So I think that was a good project, and those are the types of things that I think our community partners can help with, et cetera, to get the word out. So thanks for supplying us the supplies to do that.
Alyssa, before you leave, I have three things. First of all, that number you gave us wrong. It wasn't a thousand, because they gave me one of the packets. So it's 999, because it's been noted I'm not, I'll be washing these, but I'm afraid the beaver colors will fade. But on a seri-, I do have two serious ones. A comment on the school metrics, just I'll say it out loud. Those metrics were made so nobody could accomplish them, so there could be no schools, in spite of people coming up with innovative ways to at least make sure some are educated, so I'm not happy about that. But I'm just want to say on the record, not an object, a subject that we've talked about, I just see it and I'm worried about it, article about the Governor looking to re-lease from the prisons about 400 people, and I just want to say for the record, now any attempt to put non-Marian County residents in any of our resources will be highly resisted. It's probably not one of their thoughts, but don't even think about it. That's all. Fine, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Now, move on to the consent calendar, Commissioner, if you would.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the consent calendar first on to the Board of Commissioners. OLCC application recommended approval. Medellas Antonius El Precioso LLC, EBA as Michaeladis E Antonioz El Pirco. I wish my daughter was here, she's fluent.
I'm so glad this is your week.
Yeah, she is, she is wonderful, and she's fluent. I love, she teaches immersion. Human Resources approve a recognition to establish and adopt the classification of controller at pay grade O2.A33. Public Works approve an order initiating the consideration of adopting a rural Donald Interchange Area Management Plan into the Marion County Rural Transportation System Plan, and scheduling a public hearing for September 30th, 2020. Under the Treasurer's Office, approve an order distributing Oregon State Forestry Timber Revenue in the amount of $478,399.40, as per ORS Chapter 530.
I'll second, I make a couple of comments on the, I'm very excited to see the Aurora Donald Interchange Plan moving, moving along. We will have a hearing on that, as it said, and then, just so you know, the state forestry timber revenue, those are, timber actually cut on state forest land in Marion County and distributed by formula. Marion County got about $150,000. I see school districts, Silver Falls is a big one, I think 37 comes to mind. These are all monies that can be well-used, forest-managed, and I'm all for them. Number should be higher. I think Coos County with numbers of state forests, this is only where they do actual accounting. They haven't had a dollar for years, just so you know. So, pretty happy about that. Anyway, second, any further discussion?
Nope.
And then I'll call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We have two action items this morning. The first is consider approval of a purchase order with Withnell Dodge in the amount of $116,213.23 to purchase a replacement service truck for the Marion County Public Workshop. Dennis Mansfield, go ahead. Both items are similar, but we'll do a...
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time this morning. For the record, my name is Dennis Mansfield. I'm the Administration Division Manager for Public Works. Yes, there is a purchase order in front of you. It is part of our annual medium and heavy equipment replacement for the roads fund, and this year we have a service truck that's 28 years old that is due for replacement. We actually have two service trucks that we utilize that actually go out in the field and repair various vehicles. It's really critical for our road operations when we're in the middle of doing either chip seal or various activities, that we have service trucks to be able to go out and maintain equipment so that we can get the operations up and running again should a piece of equipment go down. So again, before you, is that purchase order? It's in the amount of $116,213.23. We did go out and get three quotes on this, and Withnell Dodge was the lowest bidder. And it is our recommendation to approve the purchase order to Withnell Dodge.
All right.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Good, ready for motion? Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve a purchase order with Withnell Dodge in the amount of $116,213.23 to purchase a replacement service truck for Marion County Public Workshop.
I'll second the motion. One comment is, I'd like to know that Commissioner won't be driving that vehicle. He seems to think he has to test everything out. That's all.
No, that's, he can't stop me from going on a ride-along, right?
All right.
I might have to go to work, though. That's like, that's the vehicle that comes out and works on the hydraulics, or changes tires, or whatever, et cetera, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'd have to put on my vest and my overalls and boots. I can do that.
We don't want him in the ditch, that's all I'm trying to make the point. All right, any further discussion?
Nope.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item, similar, consider approval of purchase order with Gresham Ford in the amount of $403,462 to purchase 11 light duty fleet vehicles for the Sheriff's Office. Again, Dennis.
Yes, thank you again, Commissioners. Yes, before you, is a purchase order with Gresham Ford. These are all for all-wheel-drive police interceptors. This is part of our light duty fleet program. We do an annual replacement review. There are many factors that go into the actual replacement of these vehicles. We have approximately 30 to 40 vehicles this year that will be replaced, 11 of which of these are for these Ford interceptors. This year, we did some market research to get an idea of what's, how the state price agreement fares compared to the market itself, and they came relatively close to each other. So we continued with the state price agreement for this year. I do want to note that the state price agreement for vehicles is actually up in the beginning of 2021, so we're working with our contracts team to put a little task force together to consider putting our own bids out next year to see if we can't get better pricing than the state price agreement that may potentially come in 2021. Again, that purchase order in front of you is for $403,462, and it is staff's recommendation to approve the purchase order to Gresham Ford.
All right.
Okay.
Questions?
No. I like, the only thing I would say is, Dennis, I'd like the thought that we're going to go out on our own, just to check the market and see if it's good.
I was going to comment on the previous subject, ability to buy local plays me, but you have to go with the best deal. I do have a little bit of a question, probably don't have it off the top of your head, but I'd be curious. So it looks like these are about $39,000, $40,000 a piece under this contract, so what's a fully outfitted cruiser, whatever you want to call it?
Depending on what they need, but the primary police interceptor is an additional about $11,000 to $12,000 of outfitting costs associated to it. So you're looking close to $45,000 to $50,000.
Radio, computer. I'm sorry, what? I interrupted.
I was going to say, it's about, in total, it's about $45,000 to $50,000, depending everything that goes in there.
Okay. Don't have any other questions, a motion perhaps?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve a purchase order with Gresham Ford in the amount of $403,462 to purchase 11 light duty fleet vehicles for the Sheriff's Office.
I'll second it. Again, any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Let's keep them out of those rigs, too. All right, we, it's 9:20. We have a public hearing set at 9:30. Anything you'd like to fill in, or should we just take a 10-minute break?
Well, I got a lot I'd like to say, and I'm sure I should say it.
I do, you noticed that.
Go ahead.
I don't have any more. I've got, I'm unloaded.
We can reassess.
All right, then we'll reassess till 9:30. See you then. We're back, it's 9:30, and we're going to open, I will open a public hearing to consider administrative case number 20022, a Turner extension of water. Koppel, Louder, and Logan. Before you start, Brandon Reich, I just, I say this for the record, next party contacts, my daughter did ask that I look at this. I said, hey, I'm not, anyway, I don't know the people, I have no financial interests, but I will say that I did give it a good look. And so with that on the record, Brandon, if you'd begin.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Brandon Reich, Building and Planning Division Manager. This is an application of Ty and Shay Koppel, Arnold and Wendy Louder, and David and Bridget Logan, for an administrative review to determine whether the provision of municipal water service from an existing city utility facility is consistent with the Marion County Comprehensive Plan Rural Services Policy Special District Policy Number 7 on Land Zone Special Agriculture. Three property owners share an existing well which is not producing adequate water for all three homes. Recently, a new well was drilled and arsenic, sodium, and alkaline levels were identified in the well water, which may be difficult or impossible to remedy because of the low flows of water from the well. Nearby are existing water lines serving the city of Turner. The applicants are requesting to create a water service connection to the city water line to provide their properties with water. Interested agencies were given the opportunity to comment, and the city of Turner commented that the city is in support of the application. So briefly, I'll go over some of the evidence that was provided by the applicants. The provision of water service outside the urban growth boundary must be consistent with Marion County Comprehensive Plan Rural Services Policy Special District Policy 7. The applicants provided evidence from two well drillers that it is difficult for wells in the area to produce adequate water for domestic use. In addition, a hydrogeologist from the Oregon Water Resources Department describes the geology of the area as tending to not produce adequate water for domestic use and tending to decline over time. The applicants drilled an additional well on their property. The water was tested and determined to be alkaline with high sodium levels. In addition, arsenic was found in the water at levels that exceed the EPA drinking water minimum. Water Lab reviewed the results and indicated that arsenic may not be possible to remedy because of the low flows of water from the well preclude treatment. The city of Turner has agreed to provide municipal water to the properties. In addition, the property owners have considered placing a holding tank on their property to obtain water trucked in from a domestic water service as an alternative to the city service. The applicants reviewed that possibility and determined that the ability to receive water through the service in a timely manner is expensive and highly dependent on the supplier's schedule and their availability. It appears to staff that there is an additional difficulty in this situation because there are three property owners connected to one well. It could be difficult to establish not just one additional well to serve the three properties, but to establish up to three additional wells, each serving one of the properties, and that receiving water from a delivery service is more difficult when three households are connected to the same system because of the logistics of delivering enough water in a timely manner to all three households. The applicants provided evidence that after the initial cost to establish service from the city, the overall cost to obtain water from city service long-term is lower than the other options. Oregon Administrative Rule 6601165 allows for the extension of water service to rural lands, provided the service meets certain criteria, that it does not increase the density of rural development. This area proposed to be served is zoned for farming in a special agriculture zone. No increase in the base density is proposed or could be considered as a result of this request, and no additional residential development is proposed to be served by the extension other than existing homes. Staff recommends the board find that the extension to municipal water service is consistent with Marion County Comprehensive Plan Rural Services Policy Special District Policy 7, and that the applicable state administrative rule is, is, it's consistent with the applicable state administrative rule, subject to conditions of approval. With that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions?
Well, maybe at the end, Brandon, I do have a couple of questions, but we'll hear from the opponent. If there's anybody opposing.
Brandon, I do have one, just so, and I can't see if, I didn't look to see if it's in the conditions, so just talk about that it can't be extended to other parties or cause further development. Is that just something we'd look at further, or you just not address it in this issue, or?
This is specific to these three parcels. The approval is only good, would only be good for these three properties.
And I don't even know how large the properties are, but there couldn't be any further subdivision without violating something?
No, there are properties in the area with a measure 49 approval, but I don't believe they're part of this proposal. These are three existing properties, three existing homes.
Yes, I don't know the lot size, and I want to make sure that's not anything...
The minimum lot size is 80 acres, and they're well under that size.
Okay. Did you have something?
Boy, I didn't have this question written down, but Brandon, is there other places in Marion County that you can cite that this has happened before? And I believe there are, but can you use an example?
Mm-hmm. These have happened before in water-limited areas, for instance, up near Silverton. This is an area where the water is limited, but it hasn't been declared by the state to be a limited groundwater area, or sensitive groundwater area. It's not covered under our sensitive groundwater overlay zone. It's similar. Whether the state would someday head that way, if they had enough evidence of the geology to make that happen, we don't know yet. But the declining, the declining water in the wells over time is similar to what's happening in other areas. The only other time we've done this is an extension of water outside the city of Woodburn, and they had arsenic in a community well that they were unable to treat. On a well that size, it was too expensive to possibly treat that in water, in Woodburn Extended Water to a mobile home community.
And then just to be clear, this kind of has both some quantity and some quality of waters. Is that issue here?
This does.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Well, I'll go ahead and ask my questions, then, since we're moving pretty quick here. What about the existing well, or wells? Once this is, I see the conditions here, but that doesn't, it doesn't talk about abandonment of those wells, or what would happen there?
The wells would have to be abandoned, once they're no longer in use.
Would that be in one of the conditions, or would that be subject to getting the permits?
That would be, that could be part of the permitting process. They'd go through the state, they'd go through a well driller to do the abandonment of wells and register, I believe they register that with the state Water Resources Department.
Do you want to add that to a condition, perhaps, that we consider?
Well, I don't know. Is that, is that an obligation under what we're doing here, that those wells would need to be abandoned?
It wouldn't have to be. They could retain the wells for like, for watering lawns, or for a garden, something like that.
They still could.
If they chose to.
Yeah.
They would have to create a permanent connection from the, they'd have to get a plumbing permit to get a connection to connect the water from the city to their house, and they could no longer use the well. They couldn't, they wouldn't have the option of either using the well or using the city. It'd be a permanent connection between the house and the city system, and it requires a plumbing permit. So the wells would have to be disconnected from the homes entirely and used in some other way, if possible.
Right. Anything else?
Nothing.
All right, thank you. So we have two people signed up, both in support, if they'd like to make a comment. Would you go where Brandon is, if you would like to? The first is Ty Koppel and Shay, you can come together if you'd like, or whatever you'd like to say. Grab another chair. And if you'd speak pretty closely to the microphone, so we can record it.
So I, Brandon summed it up pretty well. This process has taken five years to get to this point. And just so we're all clear, the two wells that are on the property, which is just shy of seven acres, one was failing five years ago. We got to a point this year to where we had to drill another well. We were totally out. That well subsequently, you know, tested high, excuse me, the original well failed. We drilled a replacement well in February. That well made it until July. It went from point, or excuse me, 2.5 gallons per minute to an estimate of somewhere between 0.3 and 0.5 gallons from the time in February and until July. We also spoke a bit about the, the area not being identified with the state as far as a low-water-sensitive area. At that point, when I had the Oregon Water Resources Board, or excuse me, Oregon Water Resources on my property testing our wells, we got to a point with that letter to where he could submit me a letter. That was the best he could do without furthering the process more. That was approximately four years ago. And at that point in time, he said that they operate on a broad scope, a broad range, so with them, with being the state, to continue down the path that I was on, for them to declare it a water-sensitive area, much like what they've done in the Silverton area, they were going to encompass and affect a lot more property owners other than myself. At that point in time, I asked him for the best letter or recommendation that he could give me pertaining to my property without affecting others, and to put everything else on hold without affecting my neighbors. I just wanted to make that, you know, clarify that. So there are, there are processes still available to further that, but at that point in time, the geographical area that he was going to encompass was significantly more than the seven acres that we're talking about. Anyway, we get to this point now, we have the new well, we have a storage tank. Anyway, we get to this point now, we have the new well, we have a storage tank, we have to supplement that storage tank with off-site water. With that being done, logistically, I don't know how much water my neighbors are using. They don't know how much I'm using, even though it sounds like it may be quite a bit, 3,000 gallons. If somebody has a broken pipe, or chooses to do their laundry at their house, or wash their car, that significantly impacts the water that we have available to the three That's about all I've got.
I would just like to add, and I know it's not the county's responsibility, but we...
Real close, if you would, Shay.
Oh, yeah. I would just like to add...
Pardon me? Oh, introduce yourself, please.
Oh, I'm Shay Koppel, thank you. I'd like to add that we are a family of six, and our boys raise pigs. Four boys with...
I'm sorry, what do you need?
No, I'm just looking at you, and she said they raised pigs.
Oh, oh.
We go to the fair, and your whole family's raising pigs.
Fine.
You know, I know it's not the county's responsibility, and it's our life choice to live where we live, but it's incredibly difficult to have four little boys and 30-plus pigs on property with limited water. It's been a very large financial burden for our family, and we accept the responsibility to hook up and pay what we need to pay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything? All right, thank you very much.
I'd just like to see her boys, you know, compete with all your relatives at the fair.
They probably do.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Did anyone else wish to speak? All right. Brandon, any, any comments?
No, nothing further.
All right, then I'd like to get a motion to go one way or another, Commissioner.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we've been, we've been listening and dealing with this for quite a while now, and I think we've had work session and our management update, so it's pretty clear, and to hear the testimony just clarifies. So, I'll recommend that we close the public hearing, and close the record, and find the extension of the water is consistent with Marion County Comprehensive Plan Rural Services Policy, Special District Policy Number 7, subject to the conditions, and direct staff to return with an order reflecting its decision.
I'm going to second the motion with one comment. I just can't see that the approval harms anyone, and it certainly is a help for safety, health, and livability for the applicant, so I'm going to be in favor. Any further discussion? Jane, did you have something? Okay. And nothing else? We'll call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you all.
Sorry it's taken you so long to get to this point.
All right, that's all we have this morning, except to read the places we'll be together. I'm going to do that, it's rather short. Monday, 8:30, the 31st, 8:30 to 9:00, calendar review, location, Commissioner's Boardroom, fifth floor, 555 Court Street, Northeastern Salem. That'll be followed at 9 o'clock. Management update, Commissioner's Boardroom. Tuesday, 2 o'clock to 3, Health and Human Services Policy Committee, also in the Commissioner's Boardroom. Next Wednesday at 9:00, board session here in the Senator Hearing Room, that's on the first floor, 555 Court Street, Northeastern Salem. And that'll be followed Wednesday, September 2nd at 11:00, with a Board of Commissioners Policy Meeting. All right, anything else to talk about this morning?
Wow, a short schedule.
Yeah, I told you it gets better in the summer, you never bought it.
Yeah, I think they're doing it for your last year.
Oh. All right, if I hear nothing else, we'll call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all.